Thank you. I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. It is June 21 and it is 6:44. We are in the National High North Boardroom. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman? Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Here.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter is not here. We have a quorum. Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone. Are you all by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Others here are Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Ogara. We have Adam Markku, Mr. Clausen, Ms. Terry Donovan, and Patty Gagnon.
So the first order of business would be to determine whether this should be in public or non-public, and that's the option of the union.
The union opts for a public meeting.
Okay.
So it'll be conducted in public.
Public.
And the union is the one bringing the grievance, so the union should present the grievance first.
First.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Mosley, other administrators, and Attorney Clausen. My name is Terry Donovan. I'm an attorney with the American Federation of Teachers in New Hampshire. I serve as Director of Field Services and Collective Bargaining, and I've had the privilege over a number of years to bargain for all three of these contracts that we'll be discussing this evening. It is certainly my honor to appear here with NTU President Adam Markku and NTU E-Board member Patty Gagnon, as well as the NTU members that are in attendance. And hopefully, our goal this evening is that we can bring to conclusion, and what we consider a fair resolution, this end-of-the-year schedule discussion. I'd like to point out, and I'm going to have a little longer opening, and then I'll be turning to Adam to talk about some of the specifics of the grievance. But because of how the discussions and decisions have evolved in this case, we find ourselves in a step four grievance here before the Board of Education. Usually when you see a grievance, there have been a number of levels prior to reaching the Board of Education. And the ultimate goal of any grievance procedure, in our view, is to encourage discussion, hopefully to seek resolution at the lowest possible level. That is the purpose of the grievance procedure. There are two aspects to each of the three grievances presented on behalf of our paraeducators, school secretaries, and food service workers. There are, in our view, the contractual violations, which President Markku will outline further and testify to each grievance for each unit, because contract language is different, but we believe the same fundamental principle is going to apply. Further, and probably most significantly, is the breakdown in what we view as a required process, where we need to mutually agree to how this would be handled. We think we still have the opportunity to resolve this. I note that this is called a grievance hearing, which makes it seem informal, impersonal, and perhaps something beyond the ability to resolve with a simple motion. In our view, we're here just trying to fix and correct what we view as an injustice to three of our groups. And we're a large family in terms of an educational team. And when there is a wrong or an injustice to any of those components, it impacts everyone. So it's the position of the NTU that the Board of Education, in addition to fulfilling the contractual obligations, also had the legal obligation to negotiate the impact of the decision to waive the one-student day. It was the Board's unilateral decision, which was your total prerogative, to determine to waive the student days. And when you had the last day of school, we have absolutely no question about your ability to do that, as long as you were meeting your, you know, you met your state requirements in terms of instructional hours. But once the Board waived the day, there was that obligation to negotiate and come to an agreement with the NTU bargaining units. And that's why we're here tonight. There were initial discussions. Discussions aren't necessarily negotiations, but at some point in the process, that stopped. And that concerns us. So again, we're here to make certain before this becomes much more of a process in terms of time, effort, resources, and morale than it should be, because we think there's a simple solution, and that is to waive Monday as a day that people have to, hourly employees covered under those contracts, have to report to work in order to get paid. So we're here tonight to engage and hopefully have a collaborative process. I'd also, I think the backdrop here, and we like to share positive news, is the critical development that the NTU leadership and the superintendent have commenced negotiations in order to avoid this dilemma in the future. And that's collaboration at work, and hopefully they're ahead of the curve, and we won't go through this situation again. But it does snow in March, as we know sadly, and we're, and Mother Nature puts us forward. Why I underscore that, if in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, we're already trying to get ahead of the curve and fix this, it seems to me that we're in, sadly, we don't want to engage in an adversarial process that, as we're moving forward to address how we can handle it better next year, that we're going to be tied up in a grievance process, arbitration, or some other matter that is going to extend into the new school year. So in the meantime, the Board of Education has the opportunity tonight to, from our view, truly honor the contracts, but more importantly, by taking a vote to waive that last day, to show ultimate respect for the hourly employees, some of the district's lowest-paid workers, and truly dedicated, the same level of respect that a day was waived for Unit A in the teachers, and to move forward. We've heard a lot, and I'm sure we'll hear from the Board's side in terms of cost. Let's be reminded that for the paraprofessionals and the secretaries, these are already budgeted funds. Those monies are in the budget, and we'll be interested to hear that. For the food service, based on the handout we've received, we're talking about a total of about $6,700, according to what we were handed by the district. So we think you have the power to close this matter, close the books, look ahead, be collaborative, waive the day, and then we can, you know, totally focus on collaboration and the work going forward. So I would like to, unless you would like to entertain some discussion, call Adam as our first witness, Adam Markku. Adam, please. Do you swear?
Are we swearing here tonight?
We might as well go ahead and do it. We've been doing it in the past, Adam, so.
Sure.
Okay. So Adam, for the record, could you state your name and title?
My name is Adam Markku. I'm president of the National Teachers Union and a fifth-grade teacher on leave from Charlotte Avenue Elementary.
Okay. And during the course of performing your duties as NTU president, have you been involved in negotiations for all three of these contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so you're familiar with the language in the contracts.
I am.
Okay. Earlier, there were folders provided to the Board members. And to make it easy, we're going to go in order that's in the packet. You will see first the timeline that was prepared by Mr. Markku. We're going to skip first to going to Grievance Notification Form, Unit B, Paraeducators. I'll give you a moment. Does everybody have that? Okay. So Adam, when you prepared the grievances and the packet that you've given to the Board, you also provided an additional page entitled "Relevant Contract Provisions"?
Correct.
And the document behind the grievance are relevant contract provisions from the paraeducator contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to draw your attention, do you have your, draw your attention to the grievance. And if you can briefly explain the contractual provisions under which you have filed this grievance.
All right. So under the collective bargaining unit for Unit B, Paraeducators, we filed under the Recognition Clause 1.1 and specifically 1.3. That article, in conjunction with 273A, provides that the agreement in the collective bargaining will be applied to all members as outlined in that article with regards to wages, benefits, and retain that right under those provisions.
And further, if I'm reading Article 1.3, could you read the last part of that sentence?
"And shall retain all rights guaranteed to them under the provisions of New Hampshire RSA 273-A."
And in your view, would that include the right to bargain in good faith?
Yes.
Okay. So in your grievance, you also alleged a violation of 7.5.1. Could you draw your attention to Article 7.5.1 and explain how that relates to the grievance?
So 7.5 is workday, work year. And 7.5.1 specifically outlines that paraeducators employed by the district will work the day before the pupil year starts and have 180 pupil days.
And with the action of the Board of Education waiving one of the student days, in your view, how many pupil days would be left in this school year?
179.
Okay. And your position, is it your, so how would you anticipate the difference between the 179 pupil days and that the kids are going to be in school could be reconciled with the first sentence? The work year shall consist of 180 pupil days.
In my opinion, one would be to negotiate a change via sidebar or memorandum of understanding to 179 pupil days. Another option would be to waive the school day, as they did for teachers and for students.
And given your experience in negotiations and following the budget process, is it your understanding that for each para that's employed, unless it's a part, you know, a shortened year for a very small handful, that it's budgeted for 180 pupil days?
Yes. I would add that, in the budget, to my, best of my understanding, is that each para is budgeted for 180 pupil days, one day prior to the start of the school year, four personal days in the contractual holidays.
Okay. So if Monday, June 25, were waived, and that the paras were paid for their regular day, would that be an additional cost to the district?
My belief is no.
Okay. And in fact, what has the administration instructed paras in terms of Monday? Is it mandatory or voluntary?
My understanding is that it is voluntary.
Okay, and that's a result of the Board of Education vote?
Correct.
So if some paraeducators do not work on that Monday, that would be, quote, "savings" to the district or surplus funds?
I would have to agree that paying one less workday for a paraeducator would be a savings to the school district.
Okay. Now, you also cite in the grievance 7.5.4D, correct?
7.5.4A.
A.
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain your understanding of this chart with 4D?
4D, so we're in Article 4, Article 7.5, Number 4, letter A, and then in the chart, we're in letter D under "non-weather-related." So we're contending that school was canceled by a state waiver, and the employee should be paid of their regular compensation.
So you are aware that technically the state didn't grant a waiver like they used to do many years ago?
I am. The school district has, you can consistently use the term "waiver" in the presentation to the school board.
Okay. And is it your understanding that the district, in doing that, is doing so in accordance with what they are permitted to do under the Department of Laws, Rules, and Regulations?
I believe so.
Okay. Can you tell us why 7.5.4A, and then A in the chart, does not apply in this situation?
Because the day in question was not canceled because of a snow day.
And the day in question would be?
June 25.
Because that would have been a normal school day had the students fulfilled 180 traditional days?
Correct.
Okay. Now, with respect to the paraeducators, in 2017, there were also two waived student days, correct?
That is correct.
And how were those two days handled?
All employees in the National School District were compensated.
Okay. So there was no distinction between the teachers in Unit A and all those employees covered under Units B, C, and D?
Correct.
Have you received, in terms of bringing this grievance, let me just, we're going to get back to talking about, with all three of these discussions you may have had. But in terms of the paraeducator grievance, have you had specific feedback from your paraeducators in the impact of the Board decision in having them with this voluntary day on Monday?
Yes.
And could you share the member input in that regard?
It hasn't been positive. Terms used in Board meetings, including that they had to earn it, did not go well with the paraeducators who worked diligently every day with some of our most challenging students. I know several of them contacted the Board in the school district directly through emails and letters, expressing their disappointment, anger with the school board for their decision that they're being treated differently than the teachers.
And I wanted to ask you a question. And you either attend most of the Board of Education meetings or watch them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so you have watched most of the Board discussions and presentations on this topic?
Correct.
At one point, there was an exchange and a question that the Board didn't feel they had the ability to waive the day. Do you recall a question to that effect?
I believe so.
And here's my question to you. Is there anything in the contract or any indication that the NTU has given to the Board or the administration that would prevent the Board from waiving that day and paying the paraeducators?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Is there anything else in terms of the paraeducator grievance you would like to address?
Not at this time.
Okay. So if we can turn to the secretaries' grievance, Unit C, that would be the next grievance. Again, you filed this grievance under Article 1113, the Recognition Clause.
That is correct.
And that would be the same?
Premise.
Same premise as the paraeducator?
Yes.
So we can move forward on that. Could you go to Article 7.6, Number 2, workday, work year for the secretaries? Could you explain how the Board's decision has impacted the members of the secretarial bargaining unit?
So we have three segments within the secretaries' bargaining unit. We have Schedule I's. They are full-time, 49 weeks out of the year, and they work the same amount of hours regardless of the time of the school year, or the summer. So they're full-time, 12 months a year. We have Schedule II secretaries. They work 190 school days, or 190 days, at seven and a half hours. And then the rest of their work year, which is mainly the end of the school year through the beginning of the following school year, at four hours per day. And then we have Schedule III secretaries, and their schedules are determined, there is no set guidelines for a Schedule III. Traditionally, they've worked 181 days.
So is it fair to say that the Schedule II secretaries, their work year is tied to the pupil year?
Correct.
So if I, the following sentence, for the time, that's in 7.6, Paragraph 2, "For the time period beginning five working days prior to the pupil year, continuing through five working days after the pupil year," the workday would be eight hours. Okay? On day six, under a normal school year, on day six after the conclusion of the pupil year, how many hours would a Schedule II work?
Four.
Okay. As a result of the Board's decision, what would happen to Schedule II employees on day six this year?
They have the option of working their traditional schedule or work four-hour days.
And how much time in terms of calculating the costing, if a Schedule II secretary chooses not to work that additional time, what is the loss in pay?
Approximately three and a half hours.
Okay, so that's not a full day in that case?
Correct.
Okay. Likewise, have you received feedback from the secretaries' bargaining unit about the impact?
Not as strongly as the paraeducators' unit, but I have heard from them that it was, it's been confusing. They felt that they've been left out of these conversations, mainly the Schedule II's, and it has been unclear to them what is expected of them for the end of the school year.
Okay.
Their school year and their 190 days has been based on the traditional 180-day school calendar, plus five days before school starts and five days after.
Moving on to Unit D, food service workers' grievance. Again, just to move this along, Article 11 and 13 are the recognition clauses and the reference to 273A, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And likewise, I overlooked with the other two grievances. In all of these, we're referencing 2017, where two full days were waived, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I'd like to draw your attention to the language in the food service contract, which is also attached. Could you explain the impact that this has on our food service workers in Article 8.1?
So we have different tiers within the food service unit. We have lead cooks, we have cooks, we have food service assistants. And food service assistants have tiered two or tier three. Our cooks are tier one. Tier one are laid out with a number of school days, plus days before and after in order to prepare for the beginning of school, and then clean up and put the kitchens away for the summer, the ones that aren't in use. Our food service workers are, mainly our food service assistants, traditionally work the day before school starts in a full 180 pupil days.
Okay. So the impact, if they don't work on the June 25, would be a loss of one day's pay?
Correct.
Okay. And likewise, have you received feedback from the food service employees?
Some. Worried about, they've planned for so many days of work. They base it on the calendar that the school district and the Board of Education's approved a year ahead with 180 days. They know when vacations are, they know when days are off that aren't paid days, and they plan accordingly, because some of them, if not all, live based on their pay from week to week, and have to plan in advance when we have days that there isn't school or there's a holiday or other things that aren't workdays for them.
Okay. So I want to go back and look at the timeline, and we don't need to slog through the entire process, because I think the Board has lived multiple discussions on this topic. But one question I want to ask you, it appears in looking at this timeline that there were some ongoing discussions with the administration up to a certain point in time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And when did those discussions sort of end?
So being proactive, the school district and the union began discussing the snow days in January of 2018. I believe we had had three already at the time. The week we returned in January 2018, we went to school for a total of one and a half days. And we wanted to get a handle on it ahead of time to prevent, to give people warning, as much time as possible to know what was happening. We came up with a proposal, affectionately referred to as the seven-and-seven option, that ultimately was defeated by one of the four units that represented by the union. I met with that group. We had some alternatives. I met with the superintendent. We both felt that it was a reasonable alternative for that unit, and that we would jointly present to the school board, which we did. And the school board did not even entertain a motion on that plan.
And would that have been on the February 12 date?
I believe so. That was, if that was a Board meeting, I believe that was the Board meeting. We discussed that plan, and there was no motion made by the Board, which effectively killed the idea.
Okay. Were there further discussions?
There were. You know, there was definitely creative thinking from the superintendent, in the superintendent's office, about how we're going to address what was going to ultimately be eight snow days that we had to make up, which was one more than the previous year. There was discussion about waiving days for kids, but including the rest of the days for all staff. but including the rest of the days for all staff to work to be made whole. He was gracious enough, the superintendent, to meet with the union executive board to discuss that at the union office and have a discussion with us. There was discussions with the community through a survey, ultimately presented to the school board. And then I was presented with a document that would not have allowed food service to be paid for the entire week that we were discussing, which at that point, the executive board of the union did not allow the vote to go through. And that was when things really just stopped happening from a negotiation standpoint.
But that's, that would be the same case if you were in negotiations and you didn't reach an agreement with the other negotiating team. You wouldn't take something to the membership that the NTU negotiating team did not agree with. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's how you viewed this process up to this point?
That is correct. The, I presented the option to the six officers, and there was a unanimous decision to not bring that forward to the four collective bargaining units. Because at that point, all four would have still had to vote on changes to the contract.
Right. So would you alone have been able to change, for example, in the paracontract that the work year is defined as one hundred and eighty pupil days?
The only way to change any language within the collective bargaining agreement would be with approval of that unit. I myself cannot unilaterally change language in a contract.
So, at some point, you became aware that the Board, the Board of Education, took action with regard to waiving June 25th for teachers?
That is correct.
And that, go ahead.
I was sitting in the board meeting.
Okay, and that occurred on May 8th?
Initially, the last day of school for students was determined to be June 22nd on April 9th. There was discussion between the NTU and the superintendent's office of my concerns that it was a contractual violation for Unit A. And then on May 8th, the school board waived June 25th for teachers, covered under Unit A.
Okay. So, you have raised the concerns from the NTU that there were contract violations?
Yes.
Okay. And then, between May, the date that the Board of Education, on May 8th, waived June 25th for the teachers, making the last day June 22nd, and the decision about hourly employees, were there conversations with the central office regarding the position of the NTU?
Yes.
During, okay. And did you express your concern that, that the action was giving rise to contractual violations?
Yes.
Okay. And were there any efforts to reach some resolution with the superintendent or the Board at that point?
So, we attempted, so we had, we have monthly executive board meetings scheduled with the superintendent, and I have weekly meetings scheduled with the superintendent. And it was our intent to have that conversation at those meetings with the superintendent.
And that would have been May 22nd and May 23rd?
That is correct.
And May 29th, you were able to meet with the superintendent?
That is correct.
And express concerns about contractual violations?
Yes.
And there was no resolution during that meeting?
Correct.
And it wasn't until May 30th that you felt the need to file the grievance?
Correct.
And at that point, the initial letter sent to the Board of Education was outlining the concern, the concerns and wanting to have a discussion regarding this?
Correct.
Okay. And here we are this evening with a grievance hearing scheduled. Which if you were, let me ask this question. In step two of any of these grievance procedures, any of the three contracts, would your presentation of the grievance to a building principal or a supervisor be conversational in nature?
Step one would be the conversation and trying to, the step two would be a formal grievance.
And truly, in this case, there's not been that opportunity to engage in that dialogue?
That is correct. My initial email to the school board requesting a step one discussion was met with question. Obviously, we'd never done this before. Do we go straight to arbitration? Do we have a hearing? And ultimately, it was decided that we did, it would be a step four hearing.
And you heard in my, in the opening statement, the reference to the work that you're laying the foundation to address this problem in the, the future?
That is correct.
So you will have ample time to have these discussions and negotiate changes as may be necessary to the contract for subsequent years?
Correct.
Okay. What, what is the best possible result you would like to see out of this process, creating a lot of paperwork?
Well, ultimately, I'd like to see the other three units treated as equitably and respectfully as the teachers' unit. We have similar language, we have similar expectations. One unit is not more important than the other. Each plays a significant role in the function of a school. We couldn't function if the kids didn't eat. We couldn't function if our secretaries weren't sitting at the, in the office answering phones, playing, you know, answering the door and being the security for the elementaries and middle schools in dealing with transcripts and guidance at the high schools. And plus, I'm missing several things, so please excuse that I'm not covering everything, but understand that I understand what you do for the schools. And, you know, in paras, you know, when people think about school and their kids being taught, yes, their teacher is there, their teacher is vital. But the paraeducator is just as vital and sometimes more vital because they connect with the kid better than the teacher sometimes. And that's not the teacher's fault, that's not the student's fault, that's just how it is. And I think that's forgotten in that you hear about education and I work in a school and, oh, what do you teach? Well, just because you're, if you're not a teacher, doesn't mean that your role is not just as important as the educator in that classroom.
And in terms of, there's been a lot of public discussion, so we've heard a lot of numbers in terms of the cost being discussed. Tonight, you saw this exhibit that said daily salary cost. So the grand total, I guess we should say spent, because the money is budgeted, right, for all of these?
It's my belief that each person is budgeted for a set amount based on one hundred and eighty pupil days plus whatever their contract language states.
And the total is shown on the district exhibit is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars?
That is correct.
Did you, did, strike that. The only question, do you have any knowledge in terms of food service because it's revenue-based, right?
That is correct. They're based on register receipts. I don't know how else to say it.
Okay.
Plus, there's, there's obviously things from the, the federal government that supports our students in that program.
Last year, what, did you hear of any major issues in terms of when the Board waived the two days last year for these hourly employees?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so it didn't create a, a budget deficit or?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, or major issue. In terms of, and one last question. In terms of morale, if the Board were to waive the day for the hourly employees, what impact do you think that would have? Not only on the end of the school year, but as we begin next year?
I think it only can help. We have a very large group of unhappy employees across the district, not just related to snow days and to the end of the school year, but a variety of other things. And I don't see this hurting the morale. If anything, it may help some of it.
Okay, no further questions at this point? The Board has questions?
Yeah, the administration should have the chance to ask questions and then the Board.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the, the commentary. I just have a couple of questions just in terms of where, what, what was presented. My first question to Mr. Markou, it's just a, a general question, is you mentioned that they're around savings and the budget. And do, are you aware of how much our budget is currently?
I have an understanding of the budget process and how much is budgeted. I couldn't tell you today what the actual budget for fiscal 2018 was.
So, is it fair to say then that you don't really know if it's a savings if you have an idea because the, the budget hasn't quite closed? Is that correct?
In my use of savings, I'm not projecting the district to have a shortfall or a surplus. I'm projecting that each individual employee, whether it be a teacher or para, food service or secretary, is budgeted a specific amount of money per fiscal year. And if the district doesn't pay them that budget and amount, there is a savings per person.
But not in the overall budget, because you're not aware of that, is that correct?
In the overall budget, I'm not aware of that, correct.
How many, just jumping to the cooks for a second and the people you've spoken to, how many food service workers and cooks have you spoken to around their dissatisfaction of this process? Like spoken to, excuse me just one second, spoken to like face-to-face or on, by phone?
I've spoken to the negotiating team for that unit, and the lead cook at one of those schools spoke to each kitchen and shared survey information with me.
Do you have an idea how many individuals are dissatisfied with having an opportunity to come in and do safety training?
I don't think there's dissatisfaction with safety training. That wasn't the contention of our grievance.
Just, could you just please answer my question? Do you have a number in terms of how many cooks were dissatisfied coming in doing safety training for, on that Monday?
We didn't ask about safety training.
If we can jump back to the para-professionals for a second. There was a discussion, I believe we were talking about the contractual obligations for the para-professionals. Can you define for me exactly what your interpretation of? Good? Can you define for me your interpretation of that Monday in terms of state waiving days versus what's taking place here?
The school district has repeatedly used the term waiving the school day for students.
But just so we're clear, this was not a state waived day. This was a, a, a day that was waived based on the school board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do, are you, do you have knowledge of the state waiving school days for any other district?
In this fiscal school year?
Yes.
Not to my knowledge.
Is there a practice of that?
There has been.
Do you recall any time within the last two years of the state waiving any school days?
Yes.
Mr. Markou, ultimately, who was responsible for the budget for the district?
The taxpayers.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
So, Madam President, members of the Board?
Are there any Board members that have questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. When we were going through the contract provisions, I noticed on both the paraeducators and on the secretaries, there's specific language regarding non-teacher, non-pupil days. But I couldn't find anything under the food service workers that seemed similar to that. So I'm wondering what generally happens if there is a non-pupil, non-teacher day for the food service workers?
So, a non-pupil, teacher day, is that what you said?
No, non-pupil, non-teacher day is the language that is used under the secretaries. And under the paras, the language is school canceled and then a various number of reasons why. But when I was looking at the food service workers, I don't see anything about school cancellations and, and a, you know, a provision for that. And I'm wondering if I've overlooked it, if there's something there?
To my knowledge, there is no language relating to that that is similar to the secretary's contract.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. And that question is, you went from state, step one, then step two, then straight to step four grievance. Can you kind of tell me what happened in step three?
So, we, we actually went directly to step four. In the process outlined in all four collective bargaining agreements, step one is traditionally with the building principle. There is no building principle in this case. So you, you start at the level that the person has jurisdiction. So in this case, because the Board made the decision, I can't have a discussion to make changes with the superintendent because he didn't make the decision, nor does he have the authority to reverse the decision. So the school board ultimately is the only one in this case that can hear the grievance at step four. Now, my request in my initial email was to have a step one discussion with the superintendent. I believe Ms. Ogera was on the list, maybe, I can't remember. And I did include Mrs. Oden. Now, I understand Mrs. Oden's position when it comes to specifically things related to the teachers' contract, and I have no problem with that, and I respect her decision to be part of that. Then there was a discussion, should we go straight to arbitration? Or should we go to step four? We made the decision, let's start at step four. So that's why this process is where it is at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Markou, when you expressed concerns on May 22nd, May 23rd, May 29th, at meetings with the Administration, were you looking for Administration to make some kind of offer to you?
So, we did not meet on May 22nd or May 23rd.
You, it was, it was, you said at, at some meeting that you were there and you expressed concerns?
So, we were, my executive board and I were scheduled to meet on May 22nd on our monthly meeting, and that was canceled. May 23rd was a Wednesday. That's my standing meeting with the superintendent at central office, and that meeting was also canceled. And we rescheduled our meeting for May 29th.
So you did meet on May 29th?
That is correct.
And that's when you expressed your concerns?
Correct.
Okay, and were you looking for Administration to make an offer?
We were looking to resolve the grievance conflict that was between the union and the school district.
But by having the district, having the Administration give you an alternative to, to what, what exists?
No, our alternative was for the school district and the Board to waive the day for the three units. for the three units.
And did you, did you express that to the administration at that time, May 29th?
Without looking at my notes, I can't answer that 100%. I would, I believe so, but I'm not 100% sure. The purpose of that meeting was, there were several items on the agenda that we ended up talking about, including waiving that school day or the end of school year. Let me, I want to make sure I'm clear that we discussed the last day of school and the snow day issue and our, and our desire to have the day waived for Unit B, C, and D.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Hoensy?
Thank you. I'm looking at the timeline. So stepping backwards, June 13th, our grievance hearing tonight, oh, that's not tonight.
No, that was the date that it was scheduled.
Okay. Could you mark where step one, two, three, and four is on this timeline and which meeting the board president met with you in these discussions?
We did not meet. My request was to do a step one. Attorney Clausen was emailing with Attorney Donovan back and forth. I was in that, those conversations, and that's where it was determined to come straight to step four.
I see.
Because this was uncharted territory for both the school district and the union.
Okay, so, did you have one board representative at any of meetings prior to this, or that was just projected and never happened?
That was my suggestion, understanding that I knew that it probably would not be Mrs. Oden because the teacher's contract was involved, but I didn't feel it was my place to take her off of that or suggest someone else.
Right. So that meeting with a board member never happened either?
That never happened. It was decided to do the step four.
Thank you for the clarity.
May I, may I just answer because the request for proceeding to arbitration was made to us, and part of our rationale was that before we ramp this process up and get into a, what could be a costly arbitration or unfair labor practice, that we owed it to come back to those people that made the decision to have the conversation. And that's why, that, that was the reason. Because this isn't, you're right, I'm wrong. This, as I said, grievance procedure is resolution. And that's one of our motivations for wanting not to just ramp it up and go to arbitration.
Dr. Mosley?
Do I have a, can I ask another question?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Markou around Kronos. And we were talking a little bit about having a sense of fairness for both our paraprofessionals treated fairly with our teachers. So, my question is, is there a difference between a paraprofessional that punches in and, and a teacher?
In what sense?
Well, let's just say a teacher punches in at eight o'clock. Is that teacher responsible for punching out, or is it just one Kronos compared to a paraprofessional?
The district policy is for teachers to punch in.
And what about the paraprofessionals or hourly employees?
Hourly employees are required to punch in and punch out.
Is that a difference?
Yes.
So, in fact, there is a difference between hourly employees and salary employees?
I would guess, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I had heard that some paras may have been given the opportunity, or maybe taking advantage of the opportunity, to make up some of the hours already. Is that just a rumor, or has something like that happened?
I have not had that formal discussion with anyone.
Okay.
To my knowledge, that was not anything that was happening.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Administration?
It's my turn?
Yes.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everyone coming out tonight. You know, certainly, we're looking for some resolution as well. This is not, you know, something that we're looking forward to in terms of making, we're not looking to take any funding away from any bargaining unit whatsoever. I think the end of the year has been an issue for the last two years. I believe, and I now use Mr. Markou's response when he shared that it's the taxpayers that are responsible for the budget. I would even add that it, I feel incumbent that it's myself as well. I worked as a paraprofessional in my career. You know, whatever affects a paraprofessional in this district also affects the way that I do my job. I value what you do. I value the food service workers. I value the crossing guards, all of the hourly and salary employees in this district. The end of the year has been a question of debate for some time. And what I'm going to outline for this audience tonight is the process we use to be creative in the district in ending the school year, ways that we can provide professional development, not just for salary employees, which was actually the past practice, and I'm going to talk a little bit about past practice. I'm also going to talk about how this district has moved forward in a way to put value into our paraprofessionals, to put investment, to make investment in human capital.
Excuse me, I was waiting for, I'm just, point of clarification.
Can I just?
I'm just asking, a point of order.
Let's, let's, let's let her ask her question, and then I can address it.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I'm questioning, is Dr. Mosley testifying, or, and if so?
Dr. Mosley is testifying, and you'll get a chance to cross-examine him to your heart's content.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sorry, Dr. Mosley.
Just a point of clarification, did you want to sway me in, Tom?
No. Well, yeah, I guess I should, to be fair to everybody.
For the testimony you're about to give, the truth is all true, nothing but the truth is what you got?
I do. Thank you. So, a couple of things. Part of the end of the year, I would say the genesis of this grievance, really started with, in my opinion, of exploring innovative ways to end the year that would allow full-day professional development. Explore the school calendar that will take into consideration classroom environments during the month of June. Many of our teachers of our classrooms do not have air conditioning. Some of our teachers have shared with me, as well as Mr. Markou, concerns around heat, ventilation in their buildings, the educational, the educational environment of our kids, and, and certainly, that has been an issue long before I arrived. More importantly, and this is something that I have been very adamant about, is establishing and implementing a school-wide safety protocol for the district in light of recent tragedies. This by far is something that is long overdue in this district. I don't think it's anything that we can wait. I don't wait to wait for, for another year. I believe that it is appropriate for us to move forward in making sure that we have this school-wide safety training for all of our employees. More importantly, I also think it's important for the district, in collaboration with law enforcement, to be on the same page for the safety of our kids. I believe, I believe that, and I think we, both parties can concur, that it is very, very difficult to predict snow days. As you can see, in 1994, through 1994, 1995, there was one snow day. In 1997 and 1998, there was just one snow day. And in 2001 and 2002, we had no snow days. Now, if you just take those three years and you add them up, it doesn't even come close to all of the snow days we had last year, I mean, this past year. If someone can predict snow days, I would, I'll take your number, I will, I will, you know, buy you dinner or anything like that. So it is always a challenge to predict snow days and to make those calls for any superintendent or any school leader. So, the question becomes, you know, and it's still a question. The question is, what's going to happen next year? How can we be creative? And I will, I will share with you that the issue of snow days was not just something that we talked about now, but it was certainly something we talked about when I first started. So, there are differences between salary employees and hourly employees. And the difference in, according to the contracts and according to state law, is quite simple. Wages for hourly employees are paid by the hour for every hour hourly employees work. Hourly compared to salary employees who are paid by salary. For example, for our teachers, our teachers Kronos in once. And if we have a typical workday, for example, if we have a teacher that starts working at 8:00 a.m. and he or she punches out, I'm sorry, if we have a teacher that, that has a work schedule and punches, has a, a school day that runs from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00, and they Kronos in once, that's all they're required to do. That teacher is not compensated for an extra hour if he or she works and leaves the building at 3:00, or leaves the building at 4:00, or anything like that. They're not compensated. Hourly employees, if they work past, they Kronos in once, and they Kronos in again. And that is in the, the, the time in which they're paid for. Mr. Markou was very clear in his response when I asked him, is there a difference? And he said, yes. And I agree with that difference. Is that, and the difference is very simple. Hourly employees, when they, they're responsible for their time punching in and punching out, and when they work beyond the work, beyond 40 hours a week, they are actually compensated for overtime. When a teacher, I'm talking, you can have an opportunity to talk after, I just, part of what, I just want to be very clear, and something that I think I've been very clear with you, you may disagree with me, I understand, but please be respectful. Paid, when you are an employee and you work 40 hours, if you are an hourly employee and you are, if you work over 40 hours a week, you are entitled to overtime. Salary employees, when they work 40 hours, or, if they work 50 hours or 60 hours, they're paid on their salary. They don't get any extra compensation, salary employees. Hourly employees are, are entitled to accrued comp time. Salary employees do not have that option. Salary employees cannot have their pay reduced when there is no work to be performed or for partial day absences. So, just to give us a context of how this works in the schools, is that hourly employees punch in and punch out and are paid within the hours they worked. Salary employees are not. They are paid on a fixed salary throughout the school year. So there is a difference within these contracts. Is it, we use the word fair, I would say it's equitable. It is something that is negotiated with the administration, with Mr. Markou, and the bargaining units, and it is something that the district has to abide by. When we're looking at the paraprofessional contracts, on page 19, section 7.5, where Mr. Markou was referring to the waived days, it's, it states that, paragraph 4A of the paraprofessional contract, section, section of non-weather-related, it states, "In extenuating circumstances, the superintendent may weigh the requirement to use personal time and instead of pay for the missed, for the missed work time." In this case, I chose not to waive the time for the paraprofessionals because I believe that we can use that time more productively. And I would even go so far, and we'll see later, that I believe that it was a nice compromise based on the feedback that I received from the NTU, and also the feedback that we received from discussions that paraprofessionals have had with administrators, with principals around their use of time at the end of the school year. On page 21, section 8.1, Workday versus, this is Food Service Contract, Work Year, paragraph C of the Food Service Contract, it states, "Tier 1 cooks will be required to work 184 days, which will, which will consist of 180 school days plus three days before the start of the school year, and one day at the conclusion of the school year." Tier 1 cooks will be required to work 180 days, which will consist of 180 school days plus five days before the start of the school year, and one day at the conclusion of the school year. The Friday before Labor Day shall not be utilized for, for one of these days. Tier 1 employees whose year tasks in closing down the kitchen are complete may be exempt from working on that last day of the year with prior written approval from the Director of Food Service. Tier 1 employees' normal workday will be seven hours. Tier 2 and Tier 3 employees will normally be employed the day before school begins and on school days when food service is provided to students. This is the point, Attorney Clausen, can I just get a bit of a, some, some guidance here? Because I, I want to just kind of make a point about the food service contracts and some discussions that we've had. Is it appropriate where I can just call someone up to talk about, or just ask some questions about some information? I'd like to call a witness, but if I can't, or I can, let me know.
I, I think you ought to finish your presentation, give the union a chance to cross-examine you, and then you can call your witnesses.
Okay. So, then I'd like to get, then I can come back to the slide? All right. When we look at the cost of the day, it's not about, it's more than just transactional. For the public that's looking at this, the, the food service contracts are based on transactions, meaning that we need to serve lunches for the budget. In terms of, of what it costs per bargaining unit, it is $65,000, approximately $65,479 for that one day, the day in question. I believe that we could better utilize that time and that day for our kids. So, where we're going with this, and to give you a sense of the origins of this grievance is from the beginning. I agree with what the NTU had shared earlier around the proposal, adding seven minutes to the beginning of the school day and seven minutes at the conclusion of the school day. This proposal was rejected by one of the bargaining units. The NTU did come back, and I will say that the NTU did come back with a proposal to the board. The board did not, the, the board, I can't speak for the board, but what I will say is, the proposal came back, but the proposal wasn't necessarily, it was not approved by the other four bargaining units. So even if, even if, even if the board approved the bargaining units, even if the board approved the proposed, proposal by Mr. Markou and the leadership team, it still had to go back to the bargaining units because it had not go, had not been approved by the other bargaining units. The one that I was excited about, and we'll come back to it- The one that I was excited about, and we'll come back to it, is what I would say, the students' last day, June 15th, followed by the professional development with financial options for our food service workers. This essentially. Is that, is that feedback?
Mr. Mosher, please step back from your phone a little bit.
Step back from the phone?
Yeah. We're, we're getting a lot of your breathing in the phone. Yeah, if you could mute your phone, that would be even better. Perfect. Thank you.
This professional development, what I call the professional development option, would have benefited all bargaining units. And I will explain this. Essentially, from June 18th to June 25th, we would engage in a week-long professional development for, for employees. This was centered around safety training for all of our employees, as long as professional development for our employees, social-emotional for our kids, you know, assessments district-wide, the triangulation and coordination of data. This was by far, I thought, a pretty robust and comprehensive idea for the district. Something that was new, something that was not past practice, something that I believed would be able to move the district forward with, in coordination, in collaboration with the NTU and all of our employees. We knew, when we ran the numbers and we looked at the budget, that because of the food service employees, that that was transactional. So when you look at these, the, those, those six days, it presented problems on the budget, taxpayers and on the superintendent and the leadership team because for those six, six days, there would be no transactions. So what are some of the options to explore? How do we get to yes and not no? And so one of the options that was proposed to the NTU and the food service, to, to the NTU, to leadership was option one. If food service workers would be interested, what was their feeling around working that, that last week for professional development? Were they interested or not? If not, that's okay. Option two. Option two consists of students would be released from school on Friday, June 15th. Two days of professional development would be offered on Monday and Tuesday, primarily focused on, on school safety. For those three days, or for the days that needed to be made up for the food service workers, we recognized that there wasn't any, any time from that week until July. What we proposed to the NTU, and I believe it was a compromise, is that let us know exactly what or how many food service workers would be interested in, in working over the summer. Was it four? Was it 15? And if you were to come back with a number with us, I could bring it back to the board. We can talk as a district, we can engage in a dialogue. Let us know exactly how many would, would be interested in working over the summer. We have so many great, robust summer programs going on here. We have the, we have the, we have a great partnership with the Y. We have the blast-off program. They serve lunches. It would have been an opportunity for us to work in collaboration with our Director of Food Services to find out exactly what, how many. How many food service workers were necessary or would be interested in working over the summer? We heard back from the NTU that there was no vote. I'm not going to get into the specifics about the, the no vote. What was disappointing is that we could have had a great opportunity for all bargaining units, including the paraprofessionals and the, the food service workers, to actually engage in safety training as well as professional development and to make that investment in human capital. There was no mention of forfeiting any money. Everyone was going to be paid. It was just a question of making sure that we were creative in that payment, making sure that we were able to pay people. And for the food service workers, what we proposed is that they could recuperate the funding of that money during, during the summer if they were interested in it or, or not. So it was disappointing that we weren't able to get that, that vote and more importantly, explore that option for our kids. The administration put forth a third option. Last day of school for students would have been June 22nd. It still is for the public out there. All district employees will return to the school district on May 25th for safety training. I actually thought that was a pretty, you know, viable option. They would allow us a full day of safety training and processing on that Monday, on that Monday. The NTU decided that that was not something they wanted to entertain. On April 13th, I received an email from the NTU president stating, "After speaking with my officers, we would rather see everyone work a full day on Friday and not have to come back, and not have staff in on Monday. If this is not going to be feasible option, we would have more than, we would be more than willing to sit down and have a discussion or, or discuss a solution." So. What was presented to me was that there is still a question of, okay, we'll put the safety training on Friday. However, I still want to make sure that the bargaining units, who are hourly employees, have a choice to be paid or to, to recuperate the 180 days. So I was, in terms of being concerned for all of the bargaining units and following the contract, it was incumbent on me to come, to, to think about some creative ways to, to compensate the hourly employees while honoring the union leadership's request to have the safety training on the Friday. I couldn't just have the hourly employees not get paid or compensated. So what I, what was proposed is that I complied with the union's request to have the safety training on that 22nd. And I also, through collaboration and, and discussion, still had to come up with a way to make sure that our hourly employees can have a choice or be compensated according to the contract, what they are entitled to under our agreements. Just to be clear, in order for our hourly employees to be compensated for the entire year for the 180s, they, 180 days, they still need to chronos in and out. They can't just chronos in on, on, they can't, you can't like double dip on a Friday. You have to chronos in on a, on that Friday, the 22nd, and you have to chronos in on that Monday to be compensated for the 180 according to the contract. So this is where we are with the grievance in terms of proposal for the end of the year four. For where we're at right now and what's being offered for the faculty is on June 22nd, safety training for salary employees and paraprofessionals. Monday, June 25th will be safety training for hourly employees. Professional development for our paraprofessionals will be offered on, on that Monday, the Monday, June 25th. Paraprofessionals, we, we can look at this as the end of the year, but I actually don't see it as the end of the year in waiving days. I see this as an opportunity to be creative within the four bargaining units, an opportunity to provide human cap, to provide investment in human capital, an opportunity to, to, to provide professional, paraprofessionals who, for many years, and I've heard it and our leadership has heard, is that we want professional development. We want to learn more about our kids. How can the district provide that? And this is one creative way that we can certainly move forward to provide that professional development and, and human, and investment in human capital for all of our employees. Safety training is paramount. The goal of, in this district and what the board has voted on, and we've had many discussions, is that we just can't have, we just can't have one bargaining unit trained in safety training. We just can't have teachers or just exclusively administrators. We need all employees trained. We need everyone to be trained, and we're willing to make that investment. And that allows us to do that on both the Friday and the Monday. The other important point to all of this is that, and we didn't break the contract or we're not in contract violation because all employees will be fully compensated for Monday for attending the safety training and professional development. We are paying the district in compensating our employees. No employee with this proposal is going to lose any money. To summarize, four creative proposals to end the school year that was proposed by the administration, seven, seven minutes at the beginning and, and seven minutes at the end. We spent numerous hours of having discussions with the state, trying to move our calendar from days to minimum required hours, which would have allowed us to do professional development for, which would allow us to end the school year for students on June 15th, with professional development for the months of, for the days of June 18th through the 25th. Hourly employees, particularly food service, had, had an opportunity to either choose option one or option two. With the selection of option one, they, the hourly food service employees could have forego their compensation. Option two, they could have retained all of their compensation. It's just a question of, we needed to know how many. We could have been creative in a way where we could have allowed them to recuperate days' work within the summer schedule and the summer months, and we never had the opportunity to engage in that because there was no vote. Last day of school was for June 22nd. That was our third option. All district employees would have returned to, that would have been the last day for students on that June 22nd. Teachers would have had that half day on, on June, on June, sorry, June 25th on that May would have been full-day safety training. That option was declined by the NTU leadership with the understanding that they wanted the training to be on that Friday. That still did not allow the hourly employees to have an opportunity to be compensated for 180 days. So we planned and used some of the data that the paraprofessionals shared with leadership principals around some, some opportunities to do some professional development. And so that's how we arrived to where we're at right now in terms of our ability to provide both safety training for all of our employees with our hourly employees receiving safety training, training on June 22nd, followed by our paraprofessionals also receiving some training on social-emotional learning for our kids and to help them with their practice of, of being with our kids. I heard Mr. Markku and, you know, the leadership team talk about our paraprofessionals being the ones who are with our kids, who are the, one of the first people that our kids see off the bus, and I agree with that. I agree that that happens. I believe that that's, it's incumbent on the district to make human cap, make investments in human capital and making sure that we honor, we honor what they do. We treat them as family. We provide an opportunity, in this case, I agree, to treat them fairly. Teachers get an opportunity to engage in professional development, and I believe that paraprofessionals should have an opportunity to do the same. So this situation in terms of the Monday was what I could see an opportunity to make that commitment to professional development for our paraeducators. On that day, I briefly highlighted what would, would occur for the audience and for the, for the, for the board. Paraprofessionals, paraprofessionals would engage in a range of topics directly and indirectly around social-emotional learning. On May 16th, Dr. McKinney met with 30 paraprofessionals and talked to them about feedback, about future PD, what would be helpful, what, what they were looking for. Some of the topics that popped up were self-management, social, social awareness, relationships and skills, responsible decision-making. Certainly, all of those can fall in the, fall under the umbrella of social-emotional health for our kids. And this is a great way to take a step into providing, using the feedback that the paraprofessionals asked, the, the paraprofessionals provided us on, on the professional development that they were seeking. For our food service workers, it, it would simply be our safety training that is occurring on Friday and standard protocols for safety throughout the district, what to do in event of a school tragedy. And that is, that would be covered for our paraprofessionals. I'm not aware of all of the details that happened last year. I'm, I'm not. I am aware that the, that the two days were waived and approved by the board. I don't consider that past practice at all. That's a one-time decision. We checked with our legal counsel. Our legal counsel defined past practice. Past practice cannot over, overrule expressed language in the collective bargaining. It can be used to clarify ambiguous language. Two interpretations are both reasonable as long as standing practice of interpreting that language in one of those two ways is evidence that is what the party intends. A single incident of the school district, a single incident of the school district determining to handle a particular situation in a certain way does not establish a obligation to always handle similar situations in an identical manner. So to be aware of the dangers of past practice, this is not a past practice situation. It was something that happened one time last year. I agree with Mr. Markku around who was responsible for that. I would even add the school administration. It is a opportunity for us to use and be responsible to the taxpayers of, of Nashua. There are mechanisms in place for all of us to get to, to spend responsibly and prudently for, for, to stay within the budget. And I believe that it is also an opportunity to do some good things in the district. So in closing, you know, I would say that last year, the district, the, the district with its past practice in waiving those two days was $126,000 that was not utilized. And last year's past practice did not yield, did not yield any safety, safety-wide or city-wide training protocols. Last year, there was no, past, past practice last year did not yield professional development directly targeted for our paraprofessionals. If the grievance is approved, the ramification of this could establish the precedence of established in past practice, as a, as a district would have done this for two years in a row. With that said, I'm certainly open and continue to have the collaborative approach, but there's also responsibility as superintendent and, and as a taxpayer to make sure that we are using our funds and investing them accordingly. It is by far, as superintendent, and looking at some of the district's history, this is probably the first time in quite some time that the, that the board and the superintendent went down to City Hall to advocate for a 3.14 budget. That is still something we're championing, championing or advocating for. With that said, that we, by waiving the day, it certainly, we're compensating individuals. With that said, that we, by waiving the day, it certainly, we're compensating individuals for not attending professional development and safety training for our kids, and that is something that I don't believe is prudent for the district or for the taxpayer.
Attorney Donovan?
Dr. Mosley, could you just refresh my memory? When was your first day of employment in Nashua? When did you start?
My contract says July 1st.
Okay, so, July 1st, 2017?
Right. So, I would probably say, I think July 1st fell on like a Saturday that day or something like that.
Okay.
So, it was July 20th, July, maybe 3rd was my first official day.
Okay. And you spent a good portion of your presentation discussing professional development. Since July 1st, 2017 and today, could you share with us what professional development you've taken in collective bargaining?
I spent a lot of my presentation talking about the values of one particular professional development, but to recall professional development like I've taken value in, I don't understand the question.
So, let me break it down. Is part of your responsibility as superintendent to assist the Board of Education in negotiating collective bargaining agreements?
I'm part of that discussion, yes.
Okay. And is your job as superintendent of schools in Nashua your first job in New Hampshire?
Yes.
Okay. So, this would be the first time you've had a responsible administrative position in the state of New Hampshire, and one of the responsibilities was collective bargaining?
So, I've been involved in collective bargaining as an assistant superintendent and principal in others, in other, in other states, and sat at the table as an assistant superintendent and principal. So, the answer to your question is, yes, in the state of New Hampshire, but no in terms of my first time. I've sat at the table many times with collective bargaining for teacher contracts, for paraprofessionals, for administrators, and one of them was for food service, and it was like a plumber or electrician or something like that in my previous district.
Okay, so, back to my original question. Since July 2017, have you taken any professional development as it relates to collective bargaining in New Hampshire?
I attended some conferences at the New Hampshire State, I attended conferences dealing with professional development and becoming a new administrator in the state of New Hampshire, yes. So, what happened when I first started?
Well, I think you have to let him finish the answer.
Okay.
So, when I first started, I actually attended a New Hampshire, New Hampshire Superintendent's Conference, and it exposed me to a lot of the, not only just the collective bargaining, but all of the rules and regulations and, and just a kind of a, kind of a orientation. It was a, and a variety of perspectives and challenges that superintendents face. So, the answer to your question is, I attended a variety of conferences dealing with curriculum, dealing with collective bargaining. So, you know, to specify one particular one, I'd have to check my records.
Okay, so, you had a slide, an earlier slide, and I don't think we need to bring it up, that was meant to inform on the difference between hourly and salaried employees?
Yes, I did.
Do you have any doubt that the Nashua Teachers Union does not understand the difference between an hourly and salaried employee?
I don't speak for the Nashua Teachers Union. I just follow the contracts.
Okay. Well, if you just follow the contracts, when you stated that you're not violating the contracts because no one is losing money, do you say that's an accurate statement?
People will have an opportunity to, to, people will have an opportunity to be compensated for their work in the district under the proposal that is currently the grievance.
Okay. So, in your orientation sessions when you were a new superintendent, did they talk about what it meant to negotiate terms and conditions of employment?
I can't remember that. I don't, I can't remember that. I don't, I can't recall that right now. It was almost a year ago.
Okay, but you've been involved in multiple negotiations since you arrived, correct?
Correct.
Do you understand your obligations under RSA 273A to negotiate terms and conditions of employment?
I am fully aware of my responsibilities as superintendent, and I was hired under that because I have had lengthy involvement in collective bargaining.
So, if you violate the contract, let me strike that. If you choose an alternative method to have people work that's not provided for in the contract, haven't you violated the contract?
I haven't provided, no, I don't. I don't believe I violated the contract at all. I provided, we actually, in collaboration and discussion, as I, you know, shared in this outline, that in fact, employees do have an opportunity to perform all the duties of their contract. In fact, they have an opportunity to, to engage in professional development that they've requested, or would be better for their, for their place of employment. So, I don't believe I, the answer to your question is no. I'm not, I don't believe that what is the grievance has violated the contract.
You said in collaboration. My question is, in collaboration with whom?
Well, I just shared with you that the safety training, the safety training that the, that the NTU, we've had some discussion around that. I moved the safety training to the Friday. That is a compromise.
Multiple times through your testimony, you talked about collaboration and discussion. Do you recognize, let's, let's break this down. I think we need to do that. Do you recognize the Nashua Teachers Union as the exclusive bargaining agent for units A, B, C, and D?
I understand the bargaining units and the Nashua, and the NTU.
So, you understand that when it relates to terms and conditions of employment and working conditions that are mandatory subjects of bargaining, that you have a legal obligation to work with the Nashua Teachers Union?
I'll even take one step further. I'll work with anyone.
Okay, well, we're only talking about the Nashua Teachers Union here, okay? And, and this may feel a bit adversarial, and I don't intend it to be that way, but you do understand that you can say two things that are true at the same time. One can be good, such as professional development and collaboration.
And safety training, too.
Well, correct, you understand, but you could also understand that that can be good, but you inadvertently, you could be violating a contract that you have a legal obligation to enforce?
I understand what you're implying, but there's no violation of the contract if the employee, if we provide an opportunity for, for hourly employees to come in and be compensated according to the contract.
Where does the contract, any of the, where, let's talk paraeducator. Where does the contract, Dr. Mosley, permit you to decide when you're going to invite people in and allow them to be compensated?
Didn't invite. It's part of the contract. They have the right to come in and come in and be compensated for employee, compensated to come in and be paid to attend professional development and to be part of the district or not.
Well, you cited, and I'm not going to have you pull up the earlier slide, you cited Article 7, the box, the first box in the paraeducator contract provision, and you very boldly indicated on the slide, because it was caps. The younger folks in my life tell me when you send a message with caps that you intend emphasis, right?
No, it's just a way, just for clarification.
Okay.
It actually wasn't for caps. It was just the way it turned out on the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Trying to like to project it so it could be seen. There was no way trying to emphasize anything.
Okay.
What the purpose of it was, is that I wanted to, it was a non-weather day, which is that Monday, the 25th.
Okay, may I ask my question?
Sure.
Okay, my question is, in that, in the caps, quote, you said, "I chose not to waive the snow day or the day," per 754A, which is in the chart. Can I ask you, how June 25th is a snow day?
It's not a snow day. It's a non-weather day.
Okay, but you, if you want to correct me, I'll give you a chance to go back to the slide. You said, "I chose not to waive" in accordance with 754A. What were you referring to in the chart? Can you just go back and refer to the chart?
Instead, you're waiting, sir.
Excuse me, I just want to ask a question. No, no, I want to ask you a question just then.
Hey, hey, hey.
No, excuse me.
No, no, Attorney Donovan?
I'm going to object that the witness is being directed by Mr. Guerra.
Well, let's, let's make the objection then, and I'll deal with the objection.
Okay, I will.
We can put the slide back up on the screen. That's the easiest way to handle this.
But I would like for the record to note that if, it's fine if Mr. Guerra wants to be called as a witness.
The record shall note your objection.
Thank you. So, Dr. Mosley, it says 75 workday work year, paragraph 4A of the paraeducator contract. You were, can you tell me what you meant when you said, "I'm not, I choose not to waive"?
Yep. So, for the non-related day for the paraprofessionals, hourly employees, the, what was determined was that the, that Monday would not be waived for our hourly employees.
When you, I, I just want to drill down. Paragraph 4A, in the chart, what are you referring to?
I did not make the recommendation to waive the non-weather-related days to, for, for hourly employees. In this case, it was the paraprofessionals.
So, at the bottom of the box, it says, "In extenuating circumstances, the superintendent may waive the requirement to use personal time and instead pay for the missed work time."
Yes.
Okay, under weather-related, A, it says entire day canceled for snow day. That is an occasion when personal leave can be utilized in order to be paid, correct?
For some, that's what the paraprofessionals would like to do, correct?
Well, that's what the chart, the contract, the chart and the contract permits. D, under non-weather-related, says school canceled state waiver, employee is paid a regular workday.
Yep.
There's no reference to use a personal day, personal leave in that.
State doesn't waive days. The state would never waive days. It hasn't waived days in about four years. So, being new to New Hampshire and part of my orientation and working closely with the State Department, they haven't waived days in, in about maybe four years. What I discovered moving the, looking and investigating the contracts, I'm sorry, investigating snow days and how to work with them, the state has actually moved to minutes. So, by moving to minutes, the state would not waive days whatsoever. If you have a schedule that's on, on the minutes, I believe it basically comes out to, ideally, I think it's, and don't quote me on this, I'm just going to the top of my head, I believe it's 990 minutes for the, I believe it's the high schools and the middle schools or secondary, and 945 days for the elementary. So, the state would never waive days, what the state has said to us and to all other schools when we were presenting this challenge, they said, "You might want to go to minutes." So, we did that. By going to minutes, we actually looked at the calculations and we realized that it was our, our middle schools that actually had the least amount of time. So, then we started to calculate, based on our middle school schedule, how we can, how we can, how we can calculate a way where we can be creative and, because there's no state, the state doesn't waive days for schools.
Dr. Mosley, we don't disagree on that. We understand that, we understand.
But there's no state, you're making reference to state waivers, and as superintendent, and most superintendents should know, that the state doesn't waive days based on snow.
Well, would, would it surprise you if most superintendents understand you have to negotiate the impact of changes made to schedules? Would it surprise you to know that?
I'm surprised by a lot of things, but you're asking me, am I surprised, would they know or not? I guess I would say that many things surprise me. I don't know that, where you're going with that question. I don't like to talk ill of my colleagues.
No, why, to the contrary, district after district after district in the state that had a collective bargaining agreement, I guess I would ask you if you're surprised that there were memorandums, understanding, sidebars negotiated in district after district after district to deal with what happened this year. You mentioned the weather, and I just want to ask a question because it perplexed me. You put up some weather-related information on snow days, 1994, 95, one snow day, 97, 98, one snow day, 2001, 2002, zero snow days, and we jumped to 2017, 18. There was 15-year gap in there. Was there some significance to leaving out those 15 years?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I just was, that's just trying to give you a sense. There's no negative intent or positive intent. The intent of actually just showing that to you and to the general public is that no one can predict snow days. No one knows Mother Nature. It varies from zero to one, in this case, eight. During those subsequent years, sometimes there were four snow days, sometimes there were five snow days. I just want to just have, add a little caveat to that. Technically, we only had seven snow days. One of those days, I believe a third of the school populate, the third of the city actually lost power.
Mm-hmm.
So, that allowed us to, we had to cancel school because I think we had like a, some, I don't want to use the word hurricane, but some type of weather that didn't allow us to open our schools. And that is the case for some of our other, in other years, that's happened as well.
So, during your presentations to the Board of Education, multiple times you've, you've made reference to who would expect snow in March and how incredible, or I'm very, being very loose with words. But would it surprise you that there was record snowfall in March just of 2015 in Nashua?
Well, I guess if you're going to ask me about being surprised, I think in, one of the things in Nashua that, that seems to be something that is talked about quite frequently is, I think in 1997, it snowed on April 1st. So, that was a little bit of a surprise, and I remember that because I think it snowed like two feet. So, if you're asking me about surprise, I think that would be a surprise.
Okay. So, I was just curious, and there's, and no ill intent meant, was implied by asking, but there is a gap of 15 years looking at the history, but I would assume that you will, working with the NTU, be looking at historical use of snow days for that, that gap of the 15 years to see what's happened?
I wouldn't recommend that. Honestly, if you're asking me, working with the NTU, to recommend like moving forward, I wouldn't, that history doesn't really matter per se. The really why it doesn't matter, because you don't know what the snow days are going to look like next year based on past. The best actually predictor of a snow day or any incumbent, in climate weather or anything like that, is to use the weather tracking service we have with Rob Carroll. That actually gives us a better idea.
So, the history, so, excuse me, I thank you, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to finish your.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Question.
I, I, this is fascinating, but I don't think it's the least bit relevant.
Well, I just, I guess I just wanted to ask you, then the history shouldn't be relevant, although it appeared on the slide because you introduced that, right?
Well, what I was, there's no history intent here in terms of snow days. The, the intent of the slide is to show the unpredictability and the challenges of making up days in the end of the year. And one of the best ways to do that, and I shared it with the NTU, is to really think about what the state has proposed around moving the school year and calendar to minutes. That allows you to get a better sense of, of, of the, the, the school year, more flexibility. The second thing to that is, what we run into challenge- The second thing to that is, what we run into challenges with about moving it to the minutes is that you cut down on the number of days. By cutting down on the number of days, that doesn't allow the transactional piece to-
I'm going to object because I don't know, it's non-responsive.
Well, listen, you, you, you both are way out of control. We, we don't-
Excuse me?
This is completely irrelevant to what we're here for, unless the board wants to hear this. I mean, we need to focus on the issues.
I have questions, yes.
Okay.
And respectfully, we didn't object to a good portion of the irrelevant presentation, so.
Well, you know, nobody objected to your presentation either, so.
Okay.
Please, please, let's move forward. I think we all understand what the dispute is.
I have some questions, if they can be short and responsive, it would be really appreciated. On Friday, June 22nd, are students being served lunch?
I believe that they, if you're asking me if the students are going to have lunch, they, it's possible that they'll have breakfast, it's possible that they'll have something before they go home.
Okay, so, we're paying-
Hold on, you know what? I, to the best of my knowledge, I, I can get that answer to you, but certainly I'll have our food service director actually answer that question, whether they're going to have lunch or some type of meal.
Okay. Okay, but we, part of the decision not to waive the Monday is, I thought I was hearing revenue-based. So, we're able to, so let's assume there aren't meals served tomorrow. I'm not trying to put any facts in here. So, we have the ability to pay them for tomorrow, correct?
They will be compensated.
They will be compensated tomorrow. Last year, there were at least two days that the food service workers were not serving meals, and there, there was compensation for those two days, correct?
I wasn't here, so I'll take you for your word.
Okay. Were you aware, as you went into this budget year, of any issues regarding shortfalls in food service budget?
I, again, that's last year's budget, so that's not my budget.
All right, okay. I feel oddly, I just want to clarify. You put up a slide about past practice from Attorney Bolton.
Mm-hmm.
And this document is part of the, a packet that was provided to the board.
Mm-hmm.
In that paragraph regarding past practice that you put up there, there was another sentence from Attorney Bolton that was provided, that wasn't included in that slide, which I quote says, "Of course, the NTU is likely to assert a past practice anytime it believes it is to its advantage to do so." Do you share that view of the NTU?
I don't share a view that's antagonistic. So, if you view that as antagonistic or anything like that, I don't have that quoted here. And that's for a reason, so.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
I just don't think that, that, again, I don't think, I don't think that anything like that could benefit anyone in terms of what's going to happen here.
You spent a good portion of your presentation addressing professional development. Is that, that's a fair question to say, or answer, right? Fair representation?
No, I don't agree with that.
Okay, well, let me rephrase it. Professional development is important to you? That's a, yes?
No, I'm sorry. That's not what I'm implying. What is important to me is following the contract. What is important to me is making sure that our kids are safe. What's important to me is that our school district runs effectively.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a little, little stumped with this answer. I heard a lot about professional development. Did, your chart indicated that only one, I believe, or six, was it? Out of 100 of the food service people will be engaged in the safety training. Is that correct?
Well, I wasn't able to, there was a, there was a, there was a chart there on, that I wasn't able to speak to because I wanted to call just a person to, to talk about that chart. So, I wasn't able to clarify that. But if you, once we're wrapped up, I can have that person come up. We'll talk a little bit about that, and then we'll, I mean, you can ask your question.
It's, it's really not to the numbers, but my question is, are school, are school buildings operate as an educational team? It, does it make sense to parse out safety training to one segment of employees with perhaps an anticipated low participation rate?
Are you asking me?
Yes or no? Does that make sense to do that?
My reaction is that we are going to get on the same page with safety training. So, if it means that we have 100 people showing up, or one person that's incumbent on the district to make an effort to make sure everyone's trained in safety for our kids.
And was, okay. Just give me, give me a minute, I'll try to avoid. And is there no, you had a chart that listed the dangers of past practice. Could you put that back up, please? Do you believe that because two, two school days were waived last year, that, that resulted in no collaboration with the police on citywide safety? Or are you saying if Monday gets waived, there will be no collaboration with the police on safety? I'm just-
No, I actually think that's an opportunity that could have happened.
Okay, but you, but you're saying that's the danger of waiving that one day?
By not, I, what the intent of the slide is, what two, two days that were waived last year would have been a nice opportunity to facilitate some professional development on whatever, it's safety training, anything that you could have imagined. But I can't speak to what happened last year.
No, I'm just trying to understand the, the slide, in other words, let me try to put it in a positive way. Is there not still the opportunity to do all those things? Collaboration, professional development, school safety training, and do it well as we come back to school? Even if Monday is waived? Because the paraeducators aren't getting school safety training on Monday, correct?
They can if they want.
Okay, or the other training?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, if school safety training, as we all agree, is a critical and vital training to have, shouldn't it be considered a mandatory training as part of the required professional development days as we begin the new school year?
According to the contract, I can't mandate it. I can't mandate the training because it would be in violation of the contract. Because you can't, I, because the, I can't force the, or mandate the, the paraprofessionals to come. It's an option that they have.
On early release days or professional development days?
You're talking about, we're just talking about that Monday. So, paraprofessionals can have the right to come.
No, no, Dr. Mosley, what I'm trying to say is, this is not a lost opportunity. If we fix what we view as an injustice on this Monday, we still have the opportunity to provide appropriate training as we start the new school year with folks, correct? This is not Armageddon if Monday is waived. I didn't mean to be dramatic with Armageddon, but-
Well, that's a very interesting question, because I would say that you're making the assumption that, that we can predict when a tragedy can happen. And so, in a sense, we need to be prepared for that. In other words, you're saying to delay it. I don't think that delaying it anymore would be appropriate. I think we needed yesterday. So, I, I don't think, I think the training for next year is going to be part two of what's going to take place on June, June 22nd and the 25th.
Is it not correct there would be the opportunity before school starts to provide the training?
That's what we're doing on the 22nd and the 25th.
Okay, next school year, let's go past July 1. I just want to make sure, there is the opportunity, and within contractual bounds for all four groups, to provide school safety training before we begin the next school year?
And we're going to do that as part two of the training we're going to have on June 22nd and the 25th. So, let me just describe the training. The first part is the active shooting, and the second part of the training is actually like triads. So, it's ongoing. The second part, there's multiple trainings planned at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, but the problem is, the, the way we've set up this option, no matter how well-intentioned, is not mandatory training, so not everybody will be there. Two, you will have a host of new employees, particularly in those, in the three units where you might have more turnover. So, you're going to need to do this training with new people anyway as the new year begins. Isn't that correct?
So, the new employee, so the employees have, on that Monday, can opt out of the training, but it's still incumbent on the district to make sure that we provide an opportunity for everyone to get safety training.
Dr. Mosley, you might have misunderstood my-
No, I didn't, I didn't. And yes, we will have new employees coming to the district, and we do have trainings that are planned for new employees as well. But we can get the bulk of that training done on these two days, the 22nd and the 25th.
I'm sorry, could we interrupt?
And I'm, I'm done with Dr. Mosley, if that helps.
We lost Mr. Mosher, please.
So, this would be a great time to take a brief recess.
Yeah, that would be great.
10-minute recess.
10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read a minute?
Yeah.
Went directly to his voicemail three times. I assume his phone died.
Okay. All right, so, we are now going to exclude Mr. Mosher from participating in the deliberations on this grievance. And at this point, the administration, I think where we left it is the board has the opportunity to ask administration questions now.
I'll start over here. Ms. Hensy.
Okay. I'd like to know, are hourly workers allowed overtime just by staying late? I've heard otherwise from district secretaries, and I have heard that they don't necessarily just get comp time.
We have to pay, I, I don't have that information. Actually, I can check with our, our CEO for a clarity question if that's permissible. But as of right now, if we have district employees who are hourly, who are, who exceed their, a lot of time, what they're allocated for, we are responsible for paying them overtime, correct?
If it's authorized in advance, is my understanding. They can't just take it on themselves to do it.
Correct, yes.
Well, hang on a second. The law is crystal clear on this. If an employee works overtime, whether he or she is authorized or not, they get paid for overtime. So, that's what the law provides.
And, and yes, the prac, the practice is, it's very clear. If someone punches in, whatever time they punch in and punch out at, they get paid. We do not change time cards. Now, can they, if, if a principal, let's say, says, "I don't want you to work an extra half hour," they have every right to do it. But if we, we pay to the punch, we don't change punches.
So, Mr. Donovan, will, you, you're not testifying at this point. You'll be able to be cross-examined when you do testify.
I have another question. Why weren't the hourly employees given the option of putting the safety training on Friday along with the teachers? Why were only the teachers given that option?
The safety training is for the paraprofessionals and the teachers on Friday. For the paraprofessionals, as I stated in the PowerPoint, the, they're, they're going to engage in training for social, emotional growth and health for the kids. That was based on the feedback we received from them, and also, as I shared earlier, around making, and providing opportunities for paraeducators to get that training.
Why not, I mean, if Paris are getting the training Friday and Monday, and teachers are only getting it Friday, why weren't paraeducators allowed the option of moving their training to Friday? Because you said in your slide at one point that you wanted the teachers to get the training on Monday, and then you moved, they opted for Friday. Why were not the hourly people allowed that option?
In terms of making a schedule, Ms. Hensy, there are a variety of options. And given the, the space availability, the availability of trainers available to us, this was the only viable option at the time in terms of facilitating a citywide training. I'd love to have as many options available as I can, but there are some limitations in terms of space, contractual obligations for our, contractual obligations for our bargaining units in terms of the timing of the trainings. And also, this isn't a training that is actually facilitated using our district employees. This is training actually we're using for the police. And so, their avail, their availability to provide facilitators is also factored into options.
My last question. At one of these previous public meetings, it was said in this room that the administration wanted the hourly workers to punch the clock in and out for the ease of computation of that extra time. If they had that day waived, it would be more difficult for HR to compute their time. Do you remember hearing that? So, that, I mean, it gives the impression that the hourly people are coming on Monday to punch in and out because it's a lot easier to compute their hourly wage rather than just waive the day and then manually compute what they should have gotten.
My response is that the hourly professional developer, professional educators will have an opportunity to come in and get, you know, to be paid to engage in professional development. Our food service workers will have an opportunity to engage in safety training. I don't know what meeting you're referring to, so I didn't hear it tonight, but I'll take it for your word that it was said.
Yeah, well, that doesn't answer my question, but yes, it was said in this room at a full board meeting, and thank you very much.
Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I have a couple as well. The first one I have is Kronos. Kronos is the time card system? And you have to log in using a computer, no?
No. You can swipe your badge, or you can go through the computer.
Okay. In, in the past, how was that done on the days that were waived for the hourly employees? So, to, last year, there were two days that hourly employees got paid. How, how did that physically happen if they can't swipe their badge or whatever? Is there a-
So, I'm the one, I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond.
Oh, that's okay. I was just wondering, like, is there an override that HR does? Like, what's the actual, like, how does that work? Because I was under the impression that it was like a direct line between the Kronos- Because I was under the impression that it was like a direct line between the Kronos and how your paycheck gets calculated.
So I'm the one that's being, I'm sorry, Attorney Clausen.
So if Dr. Mosley doesn't know the answer to that question, we'll hold it in abeyance till somebody who does is testifying.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know what happened last year. I don't know how they calculated the days. I don't know if there was a memorandum of understanding in terms of this would be a one-time deal. I don't know, so I can't answer that.
All right, I'll set it aside. The other question that I have is when we, you were talking about the various options for the end of the year. At one point, the board as a whole had voted to have professional development for five days, the week of the 18th, and have the, the students end on the 15th and then offer professional development for the whole staff. And my recollection of that conversation was that all of our employees would be paid for five days. So I guess my question is, when it came back that food service was only going to get two days, where did the, what happened to that conversation? Why didn't it come back to the board for us to say, well, look at our options and have that conversation amongst the board about what we could do? Because I think the last vote we took was five days for everybody and that was kind of our expectation. So I feel like I've lost the timeline somewhere in there.
Yeah. I, again, I, it was voted down before it could come back to the board. The board, the, we didn't have an opportunity to, it was in the board packet on the 6th of April, I believe, that all of our, the options were presented to the NTU. And, you know, I, the NTU, you know, took that vote and it didn't allow that dialogue to, to take place, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. So at some point, we voted to do the five days. The NTU came back and said, hey, one of our, our units is only going to be able to get two days, or you said to them, there's only two days there, and they said, we can't do this. Like, I guess my question is, was there not another board meeting between then and when this grievance happened where we could have discussed that as a board?
No. I, here's, here's what, I will answer the question this way to the best of my note. We presented the, the, we, the profession, I call it the professional development option to the NTU. I can't read. I can certainly find the date on my email. And before it even came back to the board, there was a press release, released by the NTU basically saying that it was not, they were not going to take a vote on the contract, I'm sorry, on the proposal for the five, five professional development days with the option for the food service workers. So I can certainly
Okay.
Find that in the timeline.
Thank you. And then the last question that I have is, I was counting up days. And if hypothetically, all of our hourly employees decided that they wanted to come in Monday as per your proposal, if every single one of them did, I'm still counting one day lost for the food service workers and potentially a half a day lost for the secretaries because the food service says 180 plus one at the end. So I'm still confused about where that extra day is coming from. And, and I don't understand the proposal for three days over the summer. I don't, I don't know where that came from. So could you explain that a little bit more?
So I'll answer the first question. Your, your plus one day is a very good question. I'd like to hold that in abeyance and when we have another witness come up. The three days for the, for the food service, food service workers, that was in the board packet dated, I believe, the 6th. And basically, there isn't enough, and counting and thinking about transaction, transaction, we need transaction or some type of commerce to, to make up the difference or to compensate our, our food service workers. And so if we're allowing and going to minutes, which was the proposal and state guidelines that we can do, that eliminates the, the days for transactions. So to be creative, you have to think about some ways where you can generate that revenue. So the summer, when we have summer programming, there's some employment out, out there, we have positions for our summer school programs that would allow us to compensate those individuals who would, who are missing those three days. And actually, we could probably potentially do more than just those three days. So, you know, and sometimes people do not want to work the three days and we don't know that. What I was hoping for, and I said earlier, is that we could have an opportunity to get some numbers. If people said, listen, we need, instead of three days, we need four days, I, I don't know. And if that was the case, let's sit down and continue the dialogue. Let's sit down and have that discussion. That never happened. So that wasn't something that was advantageous for us or in this case, the NTU did not want to entertain the possibility of having our food service workers get compensated over the summertime for those three days.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay.
So follow-up questions from the NTU? Hearing none?
No, I'm sorry. I was, I was, I was, I was focused on the green button. Okay. Multitasking much? Okay. Can we just, do you have the March 26th or the vote that Mrs. Raymond was referring to? Didn't the board vote?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Okay, I just want, I want to be clear what I heard. Didn't the board vote that students could end on the 15th and there could be professional development for all staff that following week for five days?
That was the plan.
Right. And isn't that, but the Board of Ed voted for that? And then, am I right?
There was a proposal made for that. So I don't have the vote in front of me, so the proposal was there. I'll take it for you word.
Okay.
But yes.
Somebody can verify that, I'm sure.
Voted for that, but it was not voted on by the NTU.
But isn't it true, within a couple of days of that vote, you went back to the NTU and said that two of those five days would not be paid for food service?
No, I worked with the NTU and created some options to make sure that it fit within the budget.
Okay, okay, I'll wait till rebuttal.
Does the district have any other witnesses that it wants to call?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just have her sit here?
So who are you calling, Dr. Mosley?
Food Service Director Amy Cassidy.
Can I just have her sit here?
Oh, sorry. You raise your right hand? And stay standing. Do you swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Great, thank you.
Can you please state your name, please?
Sure. Amy Cassidy, the Director.
Amy Cassidy, the Director of Food Services.
Okay. And how long have you been in this position?
Five years.
Thank you. Can you just take a look at the slide up there for me, please?
Yes.
And just, you were here last year and can you tell me in terms of how the last day of school, so the question was, I'll start off by saying this, for today, for this year, were you able to have some conversation with some of the food service workers around the last days of school?
Very little, to be honest. They, they weren't, they wanted to know what the last day for the kids would be. That's really all they ever said to me. What's the last day for the kids?
Is lunch, is breakfast served on the la, on the last day of school on June 22nd?
Yes, breakfast is served that day at all schools.
And who services, who serves the, the breakfast?
My staff, food service staff.
Is there a transaction that happens during June 22nd for that breakfast?
Yes, they use their money, the accounts.
So even though there's no lunch being served, there's still a transaction that's taking place?
Yes.
Is that transaction part of your overall budget?
Yes, it's a meal count. We get reimbursed for that.
Okay. Over the last three years, has your budget ever run in the red?
Last year, no. I believe the year before, yes, but that was planned to replace some major equipment.
Okay, thank you. So there was a question about the plus one day there, that our school board member had around that, it's the hundred, it's 184 days plus that one day.
Right.
Okay. Can you tell me how many cooks are planning on working that one day?
Mon, Monday, the 25th?
Yes.
I have one cook who's working.
How do you know that?
We asked who wanted to go to the training. Everybody signed up and we had one cook and about five or six food service assistants sign up.
Okay. Out of, out of the approximately 110 employees that you have for the food service worker, do you have any indication on how many of them have signed up for the, for the training?
Yeah, it was just about six, six of them want to go.
Okay. I, but just for the record, I put five down, so five or six is fair enough.
Yeah.
Have you ever, in your, in your time since, besides last year in terms of past practice, have food, have service employ, have food service employees ever been compensated for not, for not fulfilling or coming to work besides last year?
No, we had never done that until last year, while I've been here.
Okay. There's a question about that plus one day. And typically, you know, we have people that come in, sometimes they don't. So last year for that plus one day, that one day after the 180 days, do you remember how many people came in?
Yeah, we only had a couple. I, I think it was three, actually. We did go through our time records and check that. Typically, our staff wants to be out the same day as the kids, so we did have three cooks last year who worked. I don't even think they worked a full day, but.
Did they punch in?
Yes, punch in and out, pay to the punch.
Okay. What about this year? Do you know how many food service workers have indicated that they're coming in on that last, that plus one day?
Beyond the 25th?
Yes.
Nobody is.
Nobody's coming in?
No.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Sure.
Attorney Donovan?
One moment, please. One moment, please. So you, you answered a series of questions about the, let's call it the plus one day. Is there some kind of problem if people don't work that additional day?
A problem?
Yeah.
No.
It, I mean, it's, that's what the current arrangement is in the contract, right?
Right, that tier one cooks and leads can work that last day after school ends unless they do not want to.
Right, tier one employees whose year-end tasks in closing down kitchens are complete may be exempted from, on the last workday of the year with prior written approval, correct?
Right.
And, so that's, that's not a problem. I'm just, I'm kind of confused why we're looking at that or talking about it. It's not a problem.
Our, our staff likes to be done on the last day of school the same day as the kids. So they can work that next day. They get one day per the contract to work after. They usually opt out of that. They're done. The kitchens are done, they work together to finish and they're, and they're done.
Right.
So they just do not usually work that day.
And that would be beyond the 180 pupil days?
Right.
Okay. And I just, I heard, so there was not, you weren't in the red with the food service budget last year?
I'm sorry?
Your budget for last school year, 16, 17?
We were not in the red, right.
Okay, and that, and in that case, there were two waived days for, for your food service employees?
Right.
Okay. And, okay, I have no further questions.
Just to, members of the board?
Tom?
Members of the board?
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. So normally, the 25th would be the 180th day, so the plus one would be the 26th. But if there's no pupils on the 25th, that's practically speaking, your plus one day, wouldn't it be? That's when they would clean up. They wouldn't wait to the 26th to clean up, they'd clean up on the 25th, Monday.
Right, but like I said, they're done. They, they work to be done that last day of the kids.
The last Friday.
Right. Whatever the last day is that the kids are there, that's their goal to get out. That's just how they've always worked. It's hot in there.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming tonight and staying so late. I'm curious, from last year, when those two days were waived, did that come out of your budget or did the monies come from someplace else?
No, that came out of food service.
Okay. How is food service budget this year? Like, is there a surplus that, available?
We really don't know till we close everything out and finish all the final invoices, do the final claim for reimbursement to see what the revenues are. It's too early to tell. Do I anticipate we'll be in the red? No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mosley, you had a comment?
Just a call, just a question. Do you believe that your faculty would benefit from safety training?
Yes, I do.
Can you explain?
They're in the schools. They, they've said that they're interested in the topic. The five or so food service assistants going on Monday, June 25th are going because they're topics of interest to them, not necessarily for the day of work, but the topic is important. We're all in the schools. I think it's a thing, a training we all need to have.
So just, so I am just reading the numbers right. Out of, so approximately 99 staff members for the food service are still not sure whether they're going or not, is that correct?
I believe they're not going.
Okay. And are they anticipating on getting paid?
Nope, they understand that the, if they want to work and be paid, that they, they go to that training and they've opted not to do that.
So they understand the difference?
No, yeah.
Okay. And do they Kronos in and out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Attorney Donovan? Members of the board?
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So that goes back to my Kronos question. What did they do last year? Do we know?
To get paid for the two waived days? That might be a, I still have to wait, okay. I would draw.
Excellent try, excellent try. So I believe you're excused, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other witnesses for the administration?
Yes, I'd like to call Dan Donovan.
Okay. Mr. Donovan, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Can you just state your position, Dan?
I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Nashua School District.
And how long have you worked in that position?
About eight and a half years.
Thank you. I just, I'll just jump to the question about how did, what, how was it Kronos in last year for these two waived days and how much was the cost for these two days approximately?
Well, the cost, I believe, was about 125,000 or so for the hourly staff. The way that it was done last year was other hourly staff who happened to be in NTU units spent part of their, part of their day, probably took them about a day, day and a half, and they manually put the information into the system. The way that the system works, Kronos is the time collector. That data is then moved from Kronos into Lawson. Lawson actually cuts the paychecks. So we had to get the information into Kronos and then Kronos into Lawson. So that was done by the payroll staff at the district office.
Dan, there's a discussion around the difference between hourly employees and salary employees. Can you, are you responsible for? Can you, are you responsible for, you know, overseeing the compensation of both the hourly and the salary employees in the district?
Well, in, in a sense, you know, we follow the Department of Labor rules or contract rules, individual collective bargaining agreement rules.
Can you briefly just kind of share with us how that plays out for our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, our, and our teachers? Just what's the delineation in terms of compensation and how it's tracked?
Well, for all hourly staff, whatever shows up in Kronos. If employee A punches in at eight and punches out at two, then that's what, that's what they'll get paid for those, those time. We don't change anything, we don't add or delete unless there's some sort of communication that there's been an error. And for salaried employees, they're expected to one punch to let us know that they've been there that day.
Thank you. At one of our board meetings, there was this discussion around compensation for those two days that were waived last year. As someone who's responsible for the budget and looking at the, the budget and understanding where the responsibility in terms of managing the budget and being responsible to the taxpayers, you mentioned that it was a bad idea. Can you explain to me why you said, you stated it was a bad idea? And also, what are the ramifications of, of, of a decision to, to waive days?
Well, I mean, I, I just think you would, most people would agree that the idea of paying people not to work is a bad idea. It's a bad idea, my personal opinion, I think it's, it's a very bad idea. I, I don't think there's many taxpayers in Nashua who would agree that, yeah, we should pay people not to work. So, we pay, we pay people when they work, for the hourly staff, for every hour that they work, assuming they put it into the Kronos system. And, you know, the reality is, our budget each year, the last three years, we've had maybe $7,000 or $8,000 left in the budget. I mean, this is a constant challenge. There are certain accounts, i.e. out of district tuition, which overruns the budget every single year. It's a very difficult thing to manage. And the idea of me having to pay, take money for people that didn't work and give it to them instead of using it to cover the costs of the out-of-district students, it just, I disagree with, it's very difficult to do. It's, it's, it's just not a good practice.
So, just looking at what the food service work, food service workers on June 25th, and we said there were six, and, you know, we determined that about 99 of those, of those employees are, are not going to be attending the, the training, or indicated that they were. Under this current proposal, would, would you be responsible for paying 99 employees that did not attend the training? Is that correct? Right, so up there, we have about, I put the number five, but Amy said six. So, there are 99 employees that are not going to be attending the training.
Right, so according to current process, they wouldn't punch in, they didn't work, we wouldn't pay them.
That's the, that's what's being proposed?
Yes.
Okay. But if we, if we supported the grievance, then it would, essentially, you would be paying 99 employees not to attend training, is that correct?
Yes.
You said there's about $6,000 sometimes at the end of the budget cycle, that, that we... Is it fair to say that the budget's tight? That we need to be, you know, prudent in how we spend the money? And certainly, that we need to make sure that we're prudent in our investment, in our, our allocation of funding? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
What is the biggest, as someone who is responsible for the budget, what is the biggest challenge and, for, for the district? In terms of budget?
The biggest challenge?
Yes, the, the financial, but you mentioned out-of-district placement. Is there anything else that, that is a challenge?
Well, it, it varies year to year, but, I mean, different accounts. I mean, mostly, the accounts, the labor accounts, which is by far the biggest piece of the budget.
And speaking of labor, we just settled new contracts, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that's another variable in terms of being cognizant of the budget, making sure that we're prudent in our decision-making. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Attorney Donovan?
Yes, a couple of questions. Mr. Donovan, you said that you think it's a bad idea not to pay people who don't work, correct?
I said, I think it's a bad idea to pay people not to work, yes.
Okay. Don't you think most people would think it's a bad idea not to, to fulfill contractual obligations?
I would assume, I can't speak for most people, but...
Okay. Well, you're, you've been involved in collective bargaining, a number of contracts, right, over the years?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And you understand that sometimes external facts happen that impact what has been negotiated in a contract, correct?
I, I'm not, external facts, I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, external factors such as a student day being canceled.
Sure, that could have an effect on a contract.
Right, and who had control about that student day being canceled? Was it the union or was it the district?
The day is, the district decides whether there'll be school that day.
Right. And in your years of negotiating contracts, you understand that there can be intended and unintended consequences when external factors happen, right?
Sure.
Okay. And just, I just want to ask a question to clarify. I don't think this is what you said, but is it your intention to use money that is budgeted for the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, and the food service to apply to other amounts in the budget? Is that what you said?
The, the budget is one lump sum of money. Simply because you budget a certain dollar amount for something, that doesn't mean you can't move it and use it for something else. That's, that happens all the time.
But you, you indeed are under intense pressure, obviously, this time of year with the budget, tracking dollars, right? Because you, you have to have a balanced budget at the end of the year, right?
Yes, yes.
That's a legal obligation. So, if this money was freed up in the budget, that's going to make your job a little easier in terms of balancing the budget, right?
Yeah.
To the tune of $57,000 or $50,000?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you have some, not ill motivation, but you do have a motivation?
No.
For this, no?
No, there is no personal motivation. I will deal with whatever happens, that's what I do every single year. This is, that, I'm offended by that statement. That's totally incorrect.
Well, I did say not personal, I said no ill motivation, but consideration. Let's use that word instead of motivation. So, would this money remain in a lockbox then, as surplus, if it's not going to be expended? Or would it be money, from our point of view, that is been budgeted, appropriated to honor the collective bargaining agreements? What, what, that money would not be returned to the taxpayers, right?
If, if we had a $100 million budget and we, as a school district, spent 99 million, then yes, a million would go back to the taxpayers.
Okay, but that's not what, that's not the fact pattern you just explained a few minutes ago, right? You don't have that kind of surplus.
No, I don't, I, that was an example. But any excess funds in the school budget's operating fund go back to the city to reduce the pay, the, the property taxes of the, the citizens of Nashua.
Correct, unless you spend it in some other account prior to the surplus being determined, right?
Well, sure, if I, if I don't return it, then obviously it isn't...
One last question. And this is really simple. Isn't it true, you do have the ability, even if the day is waived and the board directs you to pay the hourly people, that can be done in Kronos? If it's per direction of the board, the union's in agreement with it, people can be paid with whatever technology and what you need to do to make sure that payment happens for June 25th.
Yeah, we did it last year, we can do it again, sure.
Right. And there have been other times due to payroll problems or issues that there've had to be manual corrections, right?
Sure, happens all the time.
Yeah, it does, okay, it does happen quite a bit. I have no other questions.
Members of the board?
Thank you.
Ohensy.
Okay, I'm asking you this because you're good with numbers. Last year was over half a million dollars that was spent on the two days that were waived. This year, if you add it all together, I think it's 289, 289,000. So, the amount that goes to the paraeducators, the secretaries, the food services, is that about 20% of the overall amount? If, if, you know, from last year, they were about 20% of that expenditure. They were certainly not the majority of it, the teachers are 75 to 80%.
Yeah, I don't know if 20 is the right number, but certainly less than 50, yes, the teachers are significant.
The numbers that were given to me, that's what I, I came out with 22% for this year, and I think somewhat similar for last year. I just, I mean, that sounds...
Yeah, it'd be similar to last year.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
You're excused, Mr. Donovan, thank you. Administration, have any other witnesses?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I actually do. Sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to call Deanna Garra, please.
You swear the testimony you're about to give be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right, sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Garra. Just real quick, we had had some discussions around the secretaries and the last weeks of school and how to compensate the secretaries with the NTU, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you describe to us, and I believe we sent the correspondence to the NTU around that or had some discussion around that in terms of how to deal with the secretaries, is that correct?
We had a discussion with the NTU about how to resolve the secretaries and we agreed. I believe Adam proposed that Monday, the 25th, we wouldn't start counting, we would count five days after that and by, so that they wouldn't lose that, they would get a full day instead of the half day. So, that was for the Schedule twos. And then I thought we talked about and agreed about, there's only two or three Schedule threes and for them to work the whole day, it was no problem because they probably had work to do.
Thank you.
Attorney Donovan?
I have no questions.
Members of the board?
I don't know how you guys do this, it's not as easy to look on TV.
Members of the board?
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Ms. Garra, I have a question about the paraeducators' contract. On 7.5, the chart under 4A, the very last one is school canceled, all other non-weather. And so, my question is, what circumstances has that happened in the past? Have there been circumstances that that has happened in the past?
Aside from last year? Really can't remember.
Thank you. And then, I did not understand what you just said about the secretaries and starting day one through five after. I have no idea what that meant. So, could you clarify?
Yes.
Thanks.
So, the Schedule II secretaries, they have 190 full days of work. They have 190 full days of work. So, it's the 180 school days, five days before and five days after. That's the 190. In addition to that, they actually work all year round except for the three vacations. And during the summer, whatever days are left, they work half-days. So, with, we had talked to the NTU about the, the issue would have resolved itself when we agreed to let them have work a full day. Because actually, there's a lot of work that the secretaries do that needs to get done in the district. And so, they would work that Monday and then start counting the five days after that.
Okay, I don't recall...
Till they go to the four-hour days. Because they, they were, they would have lost if we hadn't done that, they would have lost a half a day.
So, I don't recall that coming to the board. So, are we on that plan or not on that plan?
It was just a discussion between us, we were trying to problem solve.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up questions from Attorney Donovan? You're excused, Ms. Garra. Any other witnesses?
No, no.
Okay. Both sides like to do an extremely brief closing argument?
I would like to call Adam for a couple rebuttal points.
Okay.
Are you still under oath?
Yes.
Okay. We'll keep this very brief. Let's start with the most recent discussion. Can you, can you tell the board about any discussions regarding the Schedule II secretaries and what you just heard in terms of testimony?
Yes, we did discuss the Schedule twos and when their five days would start. I did ask for clarification to be sent out to Schedule II secretaries and to my knowledge, that has not been done.
Now, there was some discussion regarding the Board of Education vote on March 26, 2018. Do you have that vote in front of you?
I do.
Could you read that vote for us?
This is dated March 26, 2018, Board of Education meeting, page 21. The motion by, as stated here, Mr. Garino moved, seconded by Mrs. Timmons, to accept Dr. Mosley's plan to designate June 15, 2018, as the last day of school and accept his plans for professional development for the remainder of the time for staff. So voted by roll call 5-3.
And did you have an understanding what was going to happen as a result of that Board of Education vote?
My understanding, based on my conversations with the superintendent in our month, our weekly meetings, with our conversations with my executive board and at that Board of Education meeting, that the five days of professional development would be included for all four of my units and that they would be fully compensated.
And did you have a further communication shortly thereafter, the March 26 vote?
So, the vote took place on March 26, to my recollection. March 28, I was handed this paper listed food service, which listed the options, one and option two, by the superintendent. There was no discussion on those options, those are what I was given.
So, as opposed to all members of all bargaining units being paid for all five days, the PD week, the food service employees would have only been paid three out of the five?
They would have been paid two of the five.
I'm sorry, two out of the five. So, they would have been three days short.
Correct.
And is that the reason that you didn't agree?
That is correct.
Okay. Other than that, the proposal voted by the board, as you understood it, was fine?
Yes.
Now, there was some discussion also on the 7-7, where'd you put that, that? The 7-7 proposal? Adding seven minutes and seven minutes and Dr. Mosley indicating, I believe in his direct, that the union had to approve that and you hadn't done that. Could you explain what happened around?
So, the, three of the four units approved the seven-by-seven plan. The teachers, paras, and food service. We brought back... We brought back the secretary's alternative plan for the board to look at, which they did and did not take a vote. It is incorrect that the other three units would have had to approve the plan because the new plan did not interfere or change the original plan for the teachers, the paras, or the food service workers.
Okay, so that only would have impacted secretaries?
Correct.
Okay. And as to the food service option one and two, this was provided by the superintendent?
Correct.
And option one was... And when was this provided?
Approximately March 28.
Okay. And this was the option that you just discussed a couple minutes ago, whereas the food service folks would only be paid two days a week?
Correct. It was alluded to in previous discussion that if they came forward and wanted to work the summer program to become... To make up the time, that we had to give them a number. According to this document, there were limited positions available July 9 through August 7 for employees concerned about salary. Those positions would be on a first-come, first-served basis. There was no discussion about how many could be included or if it would include all 100 and some odd food service employees.
And that summer period would be in a different fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
And you've heard other testimony. Are there any things that are, I would say, essential to the components of the grievance you would like to address in a rebuttal fashion?
I guess I'm not excited about the way the Nashua Teachers Union was presented as being, I'm going to use the word "problem" in this scenario. Some of the facts that were presented are incorrect, in my opinion, and skew the purview of what happened in the discussions and the voting by my membership and why I prevented with the executive board a vote from happening. The discussion about how many people are coming on June 25 is an interesting one, but they're making the option of not working that day. We're not arbitrarily changing their working conditions in the previous years. We have arbitrarily changed the working conditions of three units that were collectively bargained, and that's the problem. The union has no objection to professional development. The union has no objection to safety training. None of us want to go to training because we know that when it happens, that we're doing it, it's the factors of why we have to do it. We're going to go because we need it. We don't object to that. It's the way that it's being portrayed and that because we're objecting to this and we're grieving, we don't want the training, we don't want the professional development, and that is completely false.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you for that closing statement. Any questions? It was being facetious. He didn't... It really wasn't his closing statement. So if you have any questions...
I'm good. I think we've covered everything.
Okay. Would you like to now present your closing statement?
Very briefly, I think we probably are all exhausted from this discussion, and I think that's the very reason it's time to put this issue behind us. And I know it's a little testy and an exchange, but sometimes the best thing to do is to look forward. I mean, we are talking about less than $60,000 in terms of expenditure. These employees are gems, representing decades and hundreds of years of service to this district and some of the most challenging work. Heck, CEOs get a bonus of that much for showing a little move on a profit line. We've got, you know, several hundred employees here that day in and day out dedicate themselves in some of the most challenging situations. I also think we focused, or the districts focused a lot, on the difference between hourly and salary. Our paraeducators and food service employees and our secretaries truly don't see the distinction in themselves in terms of hourly. They clock in the darn Kronos or whatever it is. And I've been around long enough here in Nashua, working with everybody, to remember them saying that was more of an obstruction to them. We understand the legal reasoning for it, but you have people that rush to clock out just so they can comply with what the district expects them to do, so then they have to go back and finish what they were doing, which, as a labor attorney representing these guys, I'm saying, don't do it. But everybody that knows the work that these folks do know that to minimize it to hourly employees punching a clock, they're not dealing with widgets, they're dealing with children, they're dealing with professionals in the workplace. This grievance, we need to put behind us. It's not about you being wrong, superintendent being wrong. I say, call it a day and let's work on fixing the problem going forward. But there are some principles at stake for us in terms of honoring the contracts and honoring the working conditions, and that's why we're here, not to beat up on the board or the superintendent or the administration. And I thank you for your time, and I can push the green button off one last time.
Dr. Mosley?
Thank you. Part of this has been a long and prodigious process. I think in hindsight, I wish that we didn't have as many snow days as we've had. At the same time, I'm concerned about setting precedents. I'm concerned about the language of past practice. What we tried to do this year is to address the concerns that were approached to us at the beginning of the school year around classroom environment in June, around the creating professional development for our teachers in the context of the calendar. We also tried to, in this case, there was a... In this year, of the certain tragedies that have taken place, that we are faced with, making sure that safety is paramount for all of our kids and our faculty and our district. It is incumbent on the district and myself, the superintendent, to make sure that we use our budget to the taxpayers prudently, responsibly, and wisely. This year, our assessment for our taxpayers and for our citizens is going through this year, and that's going to have an impact on the tax rate in Nashua. I would say that to pay individuals for the time they're not working would not be wise or prudent or responsible of the district. Ultimately, that we need to be responsible, to use Mr. Marcou's words, to the taxpayer, and I want to uphold that responsibility to the citizens of Nashua. Moving forward, I'm more than happy to engage in having a discussion around the creative ways we can end school in a timely manner that works for everyone, but at the same time, as the gatekeeper of the budget, as making sure that we stay fiscally responsible as someone that has gone down to City Hall to advocate for a 3.4 budget and yet the taxpayers and the aldermen have the right to say, how can you advocate for a 3.4 budget or even ask for budget increase when you're paying people, hourly employees, not to attend professional development that you're making investments in? That's a very difficult pill to swallow, and I feel responsible remiss to make sure that, as superintendent and as a taxpayer as well, that I uphold making sure that we invest in our faculty, that we are committed to our kids and making sure that we are responsible for our budget. Thank you.
Okay. I think this closes the hearing. The board would excuse all of you so that it may deliberate on the grievance, and we will let you know once the board has decided. Thank you.
Attorney Claussen.
Non-public session for the vote?
Yeah, we will come... We're going to go into non-public session for purposes of your deliberations. They will come out of non-public to announce the vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Ms. Oden, do you need a motion?
Yes, I am going to need a motion to go into non-public.
I move to go into non-public under RSA 91A32E, consideration of negotiation of pending claims or litigations.
Second.
Fantastic.
I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
A motion to seal the minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries.
Okay. I move to grant all three grievances. By this decision, the Board of Education is addressing only the specific circumstances of these grievances and does not intend to create any past practice or establish any precedent.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Was there any discussion?
Any discussion? Okay, any discussion? Ms. Hohensy?
I think this is a matter of equity and respect. If we're waiving it for one bargaining unit, I believe we should waive it for the other three, and I also believe that we should add in the unaffiliated and all of our employees. I think it's just a matter of respect at this point. We want everybody to work together as a team, and we need to treat them well.
Anybody else? Ms. Raymond?
I'll speak. I also would like to extend respect to everybody in this process, but for me, deciding on a grievance, it has to do with the contract. It doesn't have to do so much with feelings. It doesn't have to do with the importance of training or not importance. For me, it has to do with the language of the contract and making sure that we're following 273. So I think for me, it's changing working conditions is the big issue here. So I think for everybody, we just want to move on.
Anybody else want to speak? Looking for a roll call.
Okay, on the motion to grant all three grievances, Ms. Oden?
Abstain.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. The motion carries. We have one, two, three yeses, two noes, and one abstention.
Can I move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Sure. Second.
Okay. Roll call. We don't need a roll call.
On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Yep.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries. Six to zero. We're adjourned at 10:30.
Seven.